... Father, the county president that gave it out of heart, thank you for all of the business that we have to do. Realize, I doubt you, we couldn't have accomplished anything, but we thank you for the support you have come to say this. Father, a privilege to give, literally, not in this big Christian family's marriage. I pray in words on the board, I pray for the country, our state, our whole community. I pray for the next four years, I pray for the world, I pray for the president, our government, our legislature, we need to leave it in the way of, as you can imagine, about what is standing just here, in my, in our, our country, our country.
I pray to the leaders, to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Carl Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Here.
Dr. Christie Oakland?
Here.
President Lewis King?
And your motion to approve the general one education, how many of you have your health services, have you ever been officially on page, when you go to demonstration? And like, put it up there in the meeting, and go to demonstration. Okay. And then...
Say it.
Discussion, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
And our call, motion. All of you, adopt a meeting from May fifteen, twenty twenty, very near.
I saw you.
We're on Mr. Jackson, say my name is Michael. This discussion, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
And our call, motion.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I got something I'd like to address. Uh, I, I've pondered on this, uh, for about two weeks, you know, barely. Now, Mr. McCray knows about it, you know about it, and Mr. Hall knows about it. DPW went out to do a job for them, Tom, I mean, the end result was they done a great job. But, uh, I drove up on them, and I got it all wrote down, but we don't buy that stuff. I'm a kid, I don't need to be told that I can't talk to people, I cannot tell them what to do, but I, I can speak to anybody. So, it got escalated on that morning at nine forty-five, they scraped heads, and that was it, waiting on the zipper. Somehow or another, like I said, I, I, I talked to each one of you about this, and I told Mr. McCray, and he knows the full story, now, which, for whatever reason, you didn't call me, that's all. So, they pull off the job. My point is, we are, we're looking at our finances very closely. How do we pull off a job with a whole crew? It's four or five there, so it's probably two more, pull off the job, okay? Nothing got done. All right, now, I hear all these stories, and blah, 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 but now, you called me the next morning, said they were going back after. They went back after, they done a good job. They took two trips to do one job. Now, can we afford to do that?
No.
Are we gonna, I mean, I don't know how much that goes on, and I'm, I don't want to open this can of worms up, because they do a lot of things in my district, and I appreciate it, but I'm tired of appreciating having people talk about me that's not true. Now, hadn't I told you on more of one case, let's everybody get in one room, and we'll get truth. That's how I operate. So, I'm letting y'all know, now, from here on out, I won't, I won't even say good morning to nobody. I'm respectful to everybody, if I speak, this Harris will tell you, I ask permission to speak earlier, I do that. So, the things that said about that was not right, they was not correct, and, but that part, I'm gonna look over. But the part about, I was sent over here to do our business, and that's not business, I can tell you. If he run his outfit, he run his outfit that way, wouldn't be in business long. So, I, you know, y'all jump back on if you want to, but I had to say it.
Look, let's take this, I mean, if our family is the problem, let's, let's get the executive committee involved and have a meeting.
The GPW, yeah.
This Harris, Mr. Oliver, get to the difference, and make sure that the same can get, take it to the bottom of it, let's get this squashed, whatever the problem is, get it squashed. Cause I can promise you this, Mr. Oliver, I'm just like you, and so is Jason, and so is Mr. Ronald, and so is everybody in this department. Not if I should direct the, the guys, we all get that, but if I pull, if they're doing the job in my district, I'm going to the job, and if I get out and I see Frosty or Miss Quinn, I'm gonna speak to them, because they are supervisors, I can talk to those guys. I don't have to ask, I don't have to ask permission to talk to Miss Yum Yum, I don't have to ask permission to talk to the supervisors. Now, I can't direct them on what they're gonna do, but I can definitely speak to them.
Well, I know that.
Mr. Harris?
I would like to say, and it's probably, it's too disgusting in executive session, because there's more than one side to every story.
That's why I said, yes.
So, for any of the jurors, or anyone else's comments on this, what you're hearing is Mr. Oliver's side of the story. I don't know how many of you have spoke with Ms. Quinn, Ms. Quinn did not make the decision to pull anyone off the job. I made the decision to pull them off the job, because I spoke with the person in charge that day, who was Mr., um, Frosty. So, instead of doing the wrong thing, or him, he was given order to do something by his supervisor.
Well, you in charge of the day of big operation, so you got a right to do it.
So, instead of doing it, I pulled it.
And, and that's great, and that's why I said, let's get it exactly.
And I also spoke with our legal's, um, advisor, and the email date was it.
I saw it.
Everyone was part of it.
I saw it.
So.
But, we can get everybody together and clear that everything, and how we have a lot of stories to be there.
No, I don't have a problem, cause I know what I said.
The West Coast people with the head of this concern.
There we go.
And I'm with you.
Hey, I might, I might not be right, but I used to like the poetry.
Yes, sir, let's go, build up, we had, we had concerns, you have a schedule, soon, very soon, what they said.
All right.
Let's move on. On the new bill, the court reference to live in R B, fourteen thousand nine hundred paper, the remainder of how to deal, red, can, can, good. Is he here?
No. Table, you're meeting.
Senator.
Okay. Your call, Mr. Harris. Adopt a fishing general parish, could you, to watch?
Senator.
You understand?
Senator.
Uh, host of you, in your special, question for the audience, yes, sir.
Is there any option, other than the watchman?
No.
There's, there are other journals, do you ever consider any other journals?
Not other ones, I sense I can't even think of any.
The reason I'm asking is, have you even looked at the circulation of the journal versus any other journals that are coming out?
Any, 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 the parish had a right to apply, they wanna apply for the position.
Are you satisfied with the watch?
The watchman's right for any, you know.
I mean, the advocate, I mean, the, the watchman isn't the watchman anymore, it's all, it's, you know, it's a wholly owned subsidiary of the advocate.
Yes, sir.
Um, you have other journals that are available, that are more widely distributed.
They have a right to apply, they wanna apply for the position, for the, for the, for the official journal.
And?
We not, we not in the one that wanna apply.
And, and how do you notify the journals that you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, it's out there in the paper, we do it once every year.
Okay, so you're advertising in our official journal, for other journals, to?
No.
The reason I'm asking is, I don't, I don't find it very usable, because the watchman is not highly distributed. It may be distributed in this town, but it's not really distributed around the parish. So, to see the, the official journal is a little difficult. I get more information off of the Facebook page than I ever get out of anything else. But I'm just wondering, is there a better way to make these?
Do people even get newspapers?
What's the goal of it?
Yeah, with, with the phones, the way they are today, do people even get newspapers?
That's, that's my question, is, is there some other way of doing this?
I get all the information I need off of my telephone, off the watchman site, or the advocacy site.
Okay, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about looking at the official, I mean, the, the ads, the things that you're putting in the paper, when you're advertising for, you know, when, when you say you need, what an official advertisement out, it's very difficult to find those.
It's on Facebook.
It's on Facebook for some of the stuff, but not everything. And I'm a little curious as to why do we continue using the watchman? Uh, do you, have you looked at the possibility of some other way of putting these out? How are other parishes doing it, how are other government entities doing this?
Same way. Same way, well, I need those Facebook or whatever.
Watchmen, OSHA, they all are, yeah.
Yeah, they use Democrat.
One journal, I just suggest that we do.
But you have the fact that?
Yeah, what do we have besides the watchman?
Um, y'all gonna get that bar, what is it, uh?
Explorer?
Explorer.
The Explorer's everywhere.
You only get it every week.
Yeah.
You only get it on occasions.
No, it's, it's every week.
Not in mine.
It depends where you live.
Got a motion, say.
Just to move on, forty-three, one forty-one, that's the Louisiana law, and it says, the police jury and other municipalities have to adopt an official journal, and a newspaper official journal, not a social media, and I'll give you a copy of the law, too, if you wanna do it. And that's just what the law says, it has to be a newspaper, newspapers have to qualify, they have to have such a circulation, they have to have been business for so long, I don't think they have any other official journal in the parish, you know, the Explorer is not a subscription, they have other requirements that they have to make.
And I'll, I'll write it down, and if I can send it to you.
I just, I mean, it just seems like we go through this exercise every year of, of selecting an official journal, and it's not a very effective way of communicating.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. They're talking generally, they have, like, most of the stuff, not a thing, in our call, what you care. They're somebody, they have time, call the community for tonight, call, during twenty twenty, five thirty P M, or still, twelve, three twenty, seven thirty, five.
Okay, Senator.
In a discussion, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
And our call, what you care. Budget round, our, my.
All right, Mr. Harris, Mr. Lewis, we need to talk to you.
Okay. Gordon Green from Curay, New Side Island, E W P Grandstand, and put one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for Matt before the crime.
Senator.
In the special, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care.
Look, can you, can you explain what that's for?
That's money's that own matching grants that we have out, like, pretty, pretty cleanup and all that, we have like a five percent or ten percent match, whatever it may be, we need to have the cash to make those matches money come together.
Oh, yeah, got it.
And budget out, we're going over the project, two million, three hundred thousand dollars.
Senator.
We're with you, Chris, in the special, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care.
Thanks, sir.
In the call, in the, they're somebody, their community is definitely, the good commission, I have one thing, the thing took my paddle for Paris to make it, where Mr. Mac had it to, to the paddle, because he's the one with the, a better speaking, experience, give him a drink, and everything, a, a net experience, to give it to some of these applicants, so I had Mr. Mac here to come in. I'm not, I'm not gonna say our committee is the power of these six individuals, they were equal boys when it comes to interviewing these applicants.
Can I ask something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we had a meeting that we were gonna have last week, and we weren't able to have it, now, are we gonna be able to have it?
They're named to, yes.
Cause we were stopped from having it, so, but now, you know that issue of even not, you just wanted even.
We need to, we're right there. I have a little bit of a question, if you have a question, to be a more, more, Ed, Mr. Chris, or Mac, Eric, could it count?
Senator.
Our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care. Thank you, Mr. Harris, next time the gentleman, question, uh, of the, of Michael Cheetham.
All right, Mr. Harris, President.
Finance committee, Mr. Christopher Hall.
We have a whole slew of things. First thing, I need to make motion to approve monthly invoices.
Sir. In this question, question for the audience, in our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care.
Uh, second thing, we did have a finance committee, uh, finance committee meet last week, and, uh, we, the recommendation from the committee is to approve the prison insurance renewal, with wind deductible buydown, excluding terrorism.
Mr. Wood, Andrew.
Uh, Mr. Wood's here, uh, he did have an increase on our premium, the, the wind buydown was a little, was more than what it was last year, well, Mr. Wood's been telling us all year long, everybody here knows that we were gonna see an increase, just because it, it kinda is what we have.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
But the committee voted, you're gonna have us to accept it without a buyback.
Our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care. Be a good answer, I can. We have, we have to have a warning.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you. Uh, next thing is, uh, at the meeting, uh, everybody knows, everybody's been here knows that, uh, each year, we give the Greater Free Bank twenty-five hundred dollars, they sent their request in, and recommendation from the committee is to grant them twenty-five hundred dollars.
Sir. Our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care.
Uh, and, next thing is, recommendation to approve engagement letter with Mr. Mac for his financial services, and that is a motion.
You have to be in on the financial balance from you.
Senator.
Any discussion, questions, in our favor?
Aye.
In our call, what you care.
And last but not least, is recommendation to approve restricting funds for future financial contingencies, and, what's the word that y'all looking for?
Restrict, if you wanna say the dollar amount for future, there's grants that are coming up, there's some things that we're a little bit unsure of, that we're working on, so, y'all talked about restricting those funds.
So, what we, what we wanna do is, there's some grants out, and, and this is the fine plan for grants, when they come down the pipe, they sound good, uh, and, and I'll give one for example, correct me one more, uh, this Harris, could you, so, this, uh, let's say, and, and let's just say Redwood Creek, I'm just gonna play up Redwood Creek, the state comes in and says, okay, we'll give you X amount of dollars to clean out Redwood Creek, but then the fine plan at the bottom, it says, once we give you this money to clean out Redwood Creek, then the jury is liable, we're on the hook to keep that creek clean from that point forward, and notice there were some things that kinda fell through the crack, that we had grants coming in, and nobody saw that we're gonna be on the hook for, for the remaining part of whatever it is, kind of every year, is to keep this thing clean after the fact.
They tend to.
So, we wanna make sure that we're not grabbing, hooking things that are a cost for the parish, like, laying down the line, that's all.
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
You got the name of the dollar.
How much? Two and fifty dollars?
Fifty, fifty.
Two and fifty, I'm fifty, that's all. Four and fifty dollars.
Yes, and that's a motion.
Our favor?
Aye.
And the other, Mr. Hall?
Senator.
Can I ask a question about that? We met, um, several months ago, I don't know, might be close to a year ago, with Dewey Cote, and he explained a lot of the stuff that went on with that, with those grants, would it be a good idea to meet again, with him to get us, him to explain to us?
We have a meeting set up for Wednesday at?
Fourth of September. Not this one, it's the fourth of September.
Yeah, next one.
The next one.
Will Mac and Jackie be there?
Yes.
Yeah.
And is it gonna discuss, like, Redwood Creek, and all of those kinds of things?
Exactly.
Because there were, there were ways to get the upfront money, and to get this money, and it's hard to do, and it was complicated.
It's very complicated, for all the country, felt like myself.
A lot of those grants have a good bit of fine print, too.
They're, they're, Jackie's sick of hearing me say it.
Just so y'all know, we got a law that's seventy-five thousand, we want to legislate and it's gonna need to raise money, and, and shelter is getting them some money, safe amount.
I guess they're quick.
That's, that's all.
Animal shelters is getting seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy-five.
Seventy, does that mean that we're getting seventy-five dollars, but they're getting seventy?
Yes. Now, but D C I, we've been talking about this, you know, for a long time, and it's just tabled, they get, they got to get, they got to get their own money, and that's where they, they had a little money to get their legal work done, or whatever, and then that played out, and now they can't even get a cover, so they fix now the money and do the part.
The members don't need to offend.
It's something that's parish needs.
Actually, Louis, they have, they have a lease on a property, they have a corporate endeavor with the economic development industry, who has a corporate endeavor on the property, so it's a, it's a corporate.
What's that thing about by now?
A mess?
Temporary. They temporarily got about two hundred dollars down there.
Well, has this money been, my understanding was it was not decided exactly where it was gonna go yet, and that even the lady that comes up here and talks to us about the cats has also applied for that money, so, it's been, different people have asked for that money.
I heard that the stuff said, we didn't have one, so they were giving the money to start one.
It's failed out East Bush and Animal Shelter, that's, that's, you looking up on eighty-five, six.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was told, we didn't have one, and they were giving us the money to start one, and when Ms. Christie called me to tell me we were getting that money, I said, tell me, give it back. And she was like, why? And I said, because this is like, there's other grants, now we have to hire our dog catcher, and somebody to work at the thing, and all of those.
This is a no-till shelter, they're not, they're not gonna be a dog catcher, they don't, the animals get dropped out, instead, money, obviously, by fiscal.
Okay, we can move on. Public work, you're quoted, Mr. Jason McCray.
I don't have anything like that.
In the private, Mr. Richard Oliver.
I don't have anything.
A little spinning out.
Um, the next regular police jury meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July twentieth, a public hearing to lower the speed limit on Highland Hill Drive, to install?
June?
June twentieth, thank you. June twentieth, to install speed bumps, it's also scheduled for that Tuesday, June twentieth, public hearing at five thirty. Police jury office is closed on June nineteenth, or the June tenth holiday, um, the jurors are invited to attend a grant meeting with H G A on Wednesday, June fourteenth, at D P W, from one to three. Um, wanted to remind the jurors who have it, to do your annual finance campaign, slow your train, that's newly to be done on the F D's website. Mr. Bueller, um, received specs from the judge's office today, and is working to have the files moved, and shelving complete in the next couple of weeks, so we're gonna have to do that.
And we should be able to build all the shelves and install them for less than a thousand dollars.
Right now, we take, we take, we take two months.
That's what I'm talking about, thank y'all very much.
And, please, take the advice of your legal counsel, and do not interfere with employees on their job sites. If you have a question, or there's a problem, you can contact me, you can also be a liability. That's, um, all I, oh, also, the planning and zoning commission, um, will schedule a public hearing at their next meeting, to receive input on the R B orders.
Thank you.
Can you just, quickly, say, is, can I remove the, ready report? Common security, Mr. Cal, please.
Just, a couple things, one, everybody should know, right now, we're in hurricane season, and they're predicting twelve to seventeen storms this year, dang storms, five to nine, category one to two, and one to four, cat, uh, three to four, three to five. So, uh, just, other words, make sure you got your business and all together, cause if you don't take the one, I mean, we could look at what happened to Florida last year, they still got a whole long time, and we still have Katrina going on here at the state, we still got probably ten more years of that one worth it, so.
But we're.
Yeah, and we used the command, Chris's command trailer the other day, we got a call from the sheriff's office to bring it out, and set it up, so they have a bathroom, and all available to be able to use it on the manhunt we had, so that's really the first time we've actually pulled it to a scene, and actually used it, and sheriff's office, thank y'all.
I'll track my statement.
Yeah. Yeah, I will rename it, the Chris trailer. That's all.
Well, we're all prepared, Mr. Wood. We have to be all prepared.
When everybody get that grant money, it's gonna be set up even better, right now, we just kinda hanging with it.
And a question, Mr. Wood, if you can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
He, he said, single comment?
Um, the chamber will be on Thursday, and, Mr., um, and, also, your, your reports from public works, they've been here on your page, for the month of May.
Okay, I love this, Mr. Wood, this commission and board, we put training down, we have two recommendations to approve. I believe. Go, come on, please. Go, come on, please.
Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Carl Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Yeah.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Christie Oakland?
Yes.
President Lewis King?
Yes. Yes, I know, we're gonna move on, public council, yes, sir.
I've got three questions.
Anything like these?
Lawrence Fox, that, um, I wanted to find out if there was a, a change in the policy about the R B, um, park, that had made a request on sixty-one, cause I'm seeing trailers in R B behind the building, where they have been denied before, cause I'm not sure what happened.
I have no clue, is there?
So, this, um, will just go to planning and zoning, they did have it on their last agenda to set a public hearing, I do have a copy of what was given to me after their meeting, I can make sure that it's the correct thing, but not until the next meeting, we're planning and zoning. I can make sure that is the correct thing, but not until the next meeting, we're planning and zoning, look over it, then it'll be presented.
Who's gonna hear it? No, I'm, I'm not sure about that. It's the words I'm talking about. Has something happened where they're not allowing this property to have R Vs, whereas they have denied them before? There was a property on Highway sixty-one.
Wonder if like they were the concrete track.
No, it's stuck, it's down about three, three or four slots.
I remember that, that's, that's David Jett that purchased that, and he was allowed to have as many travel trailers as there were original spots. Could not have anymore. He's got all the paperwork, everything's hooked up, set, everything's compatible, so. Where did they run to plant it at the zone? Sir. Where did they run to plant it at the zone? Didn't run to any, because it was existing. He had those existing service poles out there.
I thought we didn't play this.
Okay, because I had never seen any R Vs behind that place before, so this is something that they had in existence?
Correct. They had certain lots, and they had service poles for each lot, so as long as he didn't go outside what was existing, he could have that.
Okay. Uh, second, uh, do we have an update on the recycling for electronics?
So, I, I'm not sure if you called Miss Chelsea today, but she did, um, ask me about June or July, because usually, and they're trying to say that some of them, we, T V's, police academy, that, that they usually have it once. I can, and they're pretty much nonexistent right now, so I can try to reach out to some people and see if they can something that we can give them, if the jury wants to. I can say it'll be, um, June, July.
I've just, I, I had come in a few months ago and asked if we could, if we could do something about that, about having that kind of, uh, that recycling for electronics equipment.
I see TV always start to ruin everything, no?
Well, yeah, I got piles of stuff I want to recycle, but I can't, I can't give it away.
Will you continue this?
And also, status of broadband for the parish, where do we stand?
It, there's the gum, right?
Yeah.
Um, last meeting we had, I think they were in permanent, the permanent state of it. Um, it can take up two, five years, so I can give you an update on the company.
Okay, back, give it up, give it from the company.
And I, I like to say about that property he's talking about, on the office, the women had bought it, and he was, uh, completely revamped it. So there was.
That's your car.
He got shut down, he got aggravated, because we never present an ordinance. Well, ordinance is God, I would not guide it, you know, that, you know, because I suppose people wanna do that type of thing. And the orders, so hopefully, they'll get that to us and we get it.
And I, and I did discuss that with planning and zoning before I turned it on, we just didn't formally submit it to the committee, because there was no need to.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, please.
Permanence, um, I'm here, preface of that lab is like, I talked to you.
And Miss Chris.
And, yes, about that road, it needs some work done to it. And right at the very end, where the highway is, I showed you where it floods, that drainage needs to be cleaned, it still haven't been done. That, uh, that, uh, the drainage also where water comes down the street, that's come over the highway, but it still have not been done. And I don't know what timing that y'all have on it, but it need to be done quickly, because it goes across the highway, across the road, where both, uh, both of the cover that you all put down years ago are stocked up. No one comes out and check it and clean it out or whatever. I mean, uh, and it's right where I am, before I am and past me.
You showed the.
And I showed you.
And you reported it a while back, and I turned it in, and I'm, all I can say is I'm very sorry that it wasn't addressed. It doesn't question.
It needs to be addressed, and it need to be addressed soon, because we won't be able to get in or out of that lane. And that's three areas where floods. Those okay is not a.
No, we're gonna, that's concerning.
Y'all been saying okay ever since I've been knowing.
We're gonna try to get it taken care of, report it.
It's getting reported.
Okay, and y'all.
Tell your friend again.
So that should've been one of the first ones on the list to be done.
Well, no one will listen, there's a lot of things on it.
But that would've been down there for years, so, as I was saying, it, it's been there for many years, it'd be taken care of, it still haven't done. And also, you say ground road and, uh, dirt needs to be brought in, but all the series that I spoke to, you all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I follow up with, you, I'll, um, reach out to you, Miss Brown.
Give her, Miss, Miss Higgins, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Wayne Huen. Uh, I spoke to a few people before the meeting about an issue we have on Ring Brier Road. We had, uh, I have a neighbor who lives on the gravel part of Ring Brier Road that had timber cut on his place two times in the last three years. Uh, it's come to my attention that a permit was given to the hauler of gravel, of, not, I said gravel, timber, hauler of the timber, and, uh, so we know who actually hauled the timber. But, uh, the, the blacktop road was damaged, uh, during those trips back and forth. Uh, anyway, we, uh, we would like to see that permit holder address our damaged road.
If the permit's out of permit, it couldn't roll back exactly what before we started.
Correct.
Exactly.
Uh, the, the name, it was Jack.
Thank you.
Uh, anyway, uh, I came to this meeting, uh, nine, ten months ago, and we talked about something on Ring Brier after Ida, there was a tree that fell on the road, and it was pushed off the roadway. Now, there's a lot of weeds that have grown up, and we're talking about a tree that two grown men couldn't get their own through. Well, what Blacktop ends is where that log is, and our road is narrow, and I hope it doesn't happen. But it was my understanding when I left that meeting that that log would be removed. Third, uh, I, I, I know there's a lot of roads throughout the parish that y'all tend to. A lot of repairs need to be made, uh, we just beg to get our ditches cleaned out. I, I, I know y'all are overwhelmed with a lot of things, uh, we just like a little attention in our area if we can get some.
Continue the right, just that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know what?
If, what he's talking about is I would press the potholes, and I would press the, uh, the, if y'all remember, Mr. Mary Pennington, very upset about the road, and, uh, so.
So was Mickham, so was him, everybody.
I had very pleased folks come up here to hide it.
I played a little short, I think it's horrible, just that lot that I was on the stage. This thing, Florida, I could road itself on Ring Brier, up and out there twenty-five, or twenty-six years. I remember being cleaned one time, and it was greater, and then pick everything up and climb. But, um, that's a piece of history. Now some of the weeds just islands, and the ditch is, I guess, where the ditch is, where the ditch used to be. And a little bit of the ditch they have, has left, it's stocked up to freeze, and water goes from this side of the road to this side, or this side to this side, back and forth. And that's been a ongoing thing, and of course, I mentioned about the asphalt problem, that's another issue, and come out there and fixed it, and a week later, worse off than before. We have taken the liberty to go and painting the holes, like I saw, the painting in different colors, that people can see them before they hit. It's been going on and going on for quite some time. And, uh, we appreciate it, and we think you did it, get it fixed. And I guess I would, though, something to the earth, and I'll just mention this about the Penningtons. Back then, Goose, the Goose Dog came three years ago, we had a ring brier of an old asphalt road, which the, that time, the gravel road was barely an asphalt road coming. So we got a little lot backed up in two days, two days, a little block in the Goose Dog, but we had, you know, a lot of things happened. Actually, we took our own, this, and cut our way out of there. And the last place we went to was Dale Fineman Thursday's house, that was the last house we could come to before we had nine fifty-five. I had never been there, I knew his wife, I'd never met him, or I just knew a little bit, and I did mention to him once that, um, in a joking manner at the time, but I was kinda serious too, I said, it sure would be nice if the foundation would adopt this road. And it was a matter of less than six months, we had a road that was paid for by the Penningtons. And, you know, we sure, we don't want it now, but it was paid for by private funds. And it's been abused, the road's been neglected, and I think Pennington's, what I appreciate that much, they put in this parish wanting a different function, different things, they can cut this parish going. I do believe we don't wanna get them on the bad side. We talk in finances, that's a big financial flaw in the process.
You have about thirty seconds.
And?
You have about thirty seconds.
I'll finish. Thank you for your time.
Uh, just, if anything, do you have a second, two comments? Yeah, one, one more question. What's the status of the pothole patching machine?
July. It's three months out, two months out?
Last Thursday, July. Been around July, since July holiday.
So, yes, hopefully, soon, it's very soon. Is there any else? Is there any one good demonstration for the law?
Something.
Fifteen.